I'd like to call the order of regular City Council meeting of Angels Camp Tuesday, May 16th. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is two to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We just came out of a closed session meeting. We dealt with conference with labor negotiator and direction was given to staff. We also had conference with legal counsel, anticipate litigation, again, direction was given to our city attorney and pursuant to the California Code Section Performance Evaluation, direction was given to staff. Let's see. We have an agenda. Does anybody want to make a change in the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
I'll motion.
Second?
Moved by Councilperson Matilde, second by Councilperson Herman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. And let's see, staff updates we have in our packet are consolidated updates. Are there any questions or comments regarding the staff updates?
I do have a question. Hold on a minute. Under engineering and public work, what is MPDE, Ashley?
MPDEs means National Permit Discharge, Exferent System. It's a type of discharge into a water body. It's a type of permit that you get from, it's administered by the regional water board here in the state.
Under community development, under Stafford Reviewing Proposals for Performance Audit of the Calvez Township and working with COG and Calvez County on this project, does this have to do with the conversation going on at COG with what is the city getting benefit or what is that project?
Councilman Faldor, that is just their annual, the triennial audit. I was on the review panel for the three proposers on that project. So it'll look at the transit, the COG operations, the whole COG operations for the three year. They're due a triennial audit every three years and so now we'll be, so yeah, we'll be, we'll be a part of that because we have audited things through our LTF and that. So we'll play a small part in that.
Okay. Will County Township be making a presentation here to council about that?
We, when the, when the audit is done, yes. When the audit is completed, this is just the beginning stage of selecting another consultant.
Okay. I just want to make sure the county is coming back to report to us also other than just you.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Any other questions regarding the staff updates? Any questions from the public? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to council updates. Councilperson Matilde.
Nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Faldor.
Yes. Last night was last go and we voted for a new chair who is now Michael Olivera and our vice chair is Anita Pack. We also, it was also a workshop on the sphere of influence for CCWD and currently staff has been inducted from both CCWD and the city to work together and we'll be bringing back the, for a public hearing in July. The June meeting has been canceled to allow time between city staff and CCWD to talk about option number four related to our sphere of influence for, for water and wastewater. So hopefully staff will be coming back and we will have that discussion for council to discuss where we want to go with that. Also since it is related to Utica Water and Power, I think it's important that we keep that dialogue open.
Okay.
So natural I have to report right now.
Thank you. Councilperson Herman?
Nothing to report.
And I have no report. Okay. Now go ahead and open up public comment. In this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Is there anybody that'd like to make a public comment? Anybody at all? Seeing none, we'll move on to our first item, that is Destination Angels Camp presents the feature business presentations. Introductions by Debbie Ponchi.
Good evening, council. So my name is Debbie Ponchi. I'm Executive Director of Destination Angels Camp and tonight I am pleased to present to you as part of our program with Destination Angels Camp, featured business. And these are businesses operating in and around Angels Camp, some of the newest businesses we like to highlight. And tonight I have two that are currently operating in our downtown historical Angels Camp. And I'd like to introduce to you Michael Stange, who will be giving a presentation. And following Michael will be Pablo from Cascabel Restaurant. And Michael has a few things he'd like to set on the table before he starts his presentation.
We allowed that wine?
We thought it would-
I didn't know we were supposed to bring wine.
Well, thank you, Debbie, and thank you, City Council, for having me here today. I appreciate the time. And my name's Michael Stange. I come from the Bay Area and we've been property owners and vineyard owners since 2001. Our goal was to sort of honor a heritage, which I do have a sort of Spanish lineage and have a specific affinity for Spanish culture and had studied in Spain and whatnot. Also studied a little bit at UC Davis, which kind of gave me my affinity also for wine and, and culture. And lastly, I, I like, and I like things that bring people together, so food, wine, events. So those are the sort of focus that we have here at Vino Matate. I also have a deep passion for agriculture, which is really what brought me here into the county. As I was living in the Bay Area, I wanted to kind of get into a slower pace of life and raise my children and have them be in a business environment where I could have them present with me as they, you know, were alongside and learn some of the things about what I did and what I was passionate about and I was able to learn about my children and spend time with them. So it's been a wonderful opportunity to move here, raise my children, which go to Mark Twain, and then my son just started, he's a freshman here at high school, Brett Hart. And then also, just recently, we purchased a home here on Brett Hart Road. So our idea here is to really commit to the downtown area, which is another reason why we came here. My wife is a historian by nature and she loves history of the area. And so that again is all the little different unique things that attracted us to Angels Camp and wanting to put a business here. Specifically from a farming standpoint, we also want to pioneer and be big proponents of organic and sustainable farming. So we are certified California Sustainable Vineyard and will be finally, which takes a long time, organic certified on all our grapes and vineyard and ranch lands that we hopefully plan to do other type of farming as well and be integrated into the local restaurant farm supply in the long-term future. Our original goal here was to come, our vineyard here is on Appaloosa Road. So if you were to go up towards Copper Rapids right before Pole Station, turn on Appaloosa Road. Our vineyard is the very first vineyard that you turn and you see on the right-hand side, kind of next to Jordan Oaks and then what would be called Appaloosa Vineyards or Ron Peretti's Vineyards, now Prospect 772. They're just behind me. So it's a really nice little area and pocket for what we do. We did a lot of research and it pointed again to allowing us to do Spanish or Italian grapes. So we really want to, you know, honor again our heritage and focus on that. Briefly, a little bit about the name. Matate is a grinding Native American grinding stones. That would be the Spanish word they used here in the Mission era. And we have a little ark site in our vineyard with about 30 holes and a nice spring and a bunch of oaks and kind of what you'd call a little Native American kitchen. So Matate was sort of, again, paying homage to the, the history of the land and we sort of cordoned off that area, about three acres of the center. Again, the future plan would be having a state actual project out there on the vineyard where we have our wine out there. And right now it's just our vineyard. But in the future, you know, we can keep our space open in downtown Angels Camp as our tasting room and help us bring people to our destination in the long-term. Lastly, we do events, again, things that bring people together, wine, food, events. I'm a bit of a hobby musician and I happen to know a lot of professional musicians, so I'm really careful about calling myself a musician. And we have a wonderful amount of great musicians around town, great acting talent, juggling talent, things like that. So we put together a lot of different events, painting, wine pairing and food things. We do definitely lots of our share of music and whatnot. So the best way to keep in touch with us about that is to check on our Facebook or website. I did also provide some rack cards there for folks to take when they go, just to get any more information they'd like. And there's some tasting vouchers on there as well. And that's about all I can think about right now. Is there any questions I can open up to the, anybody has for me? Please.
I can offer a testimony.
Yeah, please do. I mean-
My wife and I have enjoyed your place a few times. Was it on Monday nights, you have the live entertainment and it's always been entertaining and fun and drink some good wine and, and walk across the street and have a nice meal. It's a, it's a good Monday evening.
Well, it's a great segue. Monday nights we do collaborate with Cascabel Restaurant and Pablo and we've been doing a lot of things, kind of feeling our way. We somewhat opened close to the time period together and so it was good for us to be able to promote each other and it's been a really good relationship in that standpoint and created, you know, that kind of place where you go in a couple places in the night and it gives some energy and buzz around the town. And so we'd like to, you know, hopefully be part of the, you know, I won't say the vitalization, I'll call it, of, of Angels Camp as I think it's there and the, the history is rich, it's just a matter of capturing that. And I see people walking today, they stop and read the posters in test. By the way, the posters are great because people read those and they spend time really enjoying the history of the town. And if I were to personal comment and anything is, I find that, you know, those are really valuable in a way to somehow maintain and keep that going in the future in some sort of permanent way is probably a positive thing as it creates a positive, you know, people walking the strip and seeing different parts of the city and whatnot. And that's a really good thing, so. But again, a good segue to, for Pablo because again, thanks for all your help too because we've been working together and, and that's how we hopefully are going to maintain each other. So, thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you.
How have your Monday nights been turning out?
Good, good, very good. I mean, we're consistent with doing it every week. So what we have is a resident sort of gypsy flamenco guitarist. He's pretty well-known in the area, does a lot of the wineries and whatnot, Nicholas Lefler. And we've worked together for a lot of years. But he brings a collaborator, so he's a professional musician and has been running a festival for about 16 years. So he books and knows a lot of different bands. So he'll pull from these professional musicians and bring a professional collaborator each week, sometimes even writing new music just for that one particular event and writing a new album and new downloads and things like that. So we're getting a little more sophisticated with what we're offering and it's a really, from a musical standpoint, and just a really good time and it's, you know, it's not really expensive. We offer, we offer that for free. We want people to come in and support the artists if they really enjoy it, so.
So on those Monday nights, what do you, what are your hours when they're doing that?
Yeah, six to eight o'clock is the music and we're open from one o'clock that day. So one o'clock during the weekdays. We are actually, it's just been my wife and I, by the way. So my father here has been a huge help. He's up there on the picture there with my wife, but doesn't work in the tasting room. So we're actually getting to the point and getting ready this summer to open up seven days a week. So we'll be hiring a little bit of staff help and trying to get our hours up to where we're consistently open. So during the weekday, we're usually open by one o'clock on Monday till eight, six to eight is the music. And then, and then we'll go till, we have other events too. Once a month on Friday, we have jazz. And then we also do painting events on Sunday afternoons occasionally. And then we always have open mic if there's any budding musicians here or anybody who wants to come and listen to really, you know, passionate people or they're doing their art, you know, that's, open mic is a good time. So we're open till eight o'clock also on Saturdays every week. Very good.
Great.
Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have to add that in addition to Michael's parents or his father being active, his mother is also very active and makes some beautiful gift baskets. And so it's worth the trip in just to see the gift baskets too. So next I'd like to introduce Pablo. Pablo opened Cascabel Restaurant. I first heard about Pablo through my daughter, who said, "Mom, he makes killer food." And, you know, I've been to Cascabel several times and I have to agree. So I'm going to give him an opportunity to talk about why he opened in downtown Angels Camp and a little bit about his restaurant. Pablo?
Hi, how's it going? I'm not too prepared. I was still on vacation mode yesterday, so this is a, sorry, I'm apologizing in advance for not doing anything. So I brought some menus right here if anyone wants to go and grab some, skill menus, as everything has our hours. And so my name's Pablo Zamudio. I was born in Mexico and I moved here when I was three years old, so I pretty much grew up here in Calaveras County. And I was a, I'm a Brett Hart alumni, graduated in class of, class, class of 2013. And my restaurant Cascabel is located in downtown Angels Camp at 1252 Main Street. And we are open from 11 to eight, Monday to Thursday, and then 11 to nine, Friday and Saturday. We're thinking about expanding an hour to that when summer comes around, when it stays brighter out. So we're still working on that, so, but we're probably going to be open longer. And so we opened our doors in probably midway through December of 2016 and we got off to a good start. We had a lot of, a lot of support from the local community, which I appreciate a whole bunch. And word of mouth is the one thing that matters here the most. It's what pretty much keeps the businesses going. And I got a lot of that while I was here. And I'm still getting a lot of it. And I appreciate the local newspapers. I'd also, every once in a while stop on by, give me a good little article. And I'm surprised how many people still use a newspaper because on, on the first article, a month down the road, I was still getting people walking in like, "Well, we saw you on the newspaper, so we decided to give you a try." So it was actually a shock to me. So I was all like, I was very impressed with that and very grateful for the newspapers for giving me a recognition and being able to put my name out there. Let's see, let's see. It took a while to open the doors. We were remodeling the kitchen, so we got, I put a brand-new kitchen in there and to be able to provide excellent food. So that was a little bit stressful, but once we got the doors open, it's kind of just got going. At the current time, we have about like 12 employees, so I feel like we're definitely providing a good amount of support for the local area. And for the summer, we're probably going to add a little more to that, especially we expand our hours. We're a family establishment. None of this would have been done without my family helping me out. And so we have very high family morals. We, and that's what we like to present when people come in. We want to treat them like family, want to give them a good, a good memorable experience is what we try to achieve every single time someone walks into the door, that they leave with a full stomach and like a good experience with the whole thing. And so, let's see. And I, like Michael said, we opened up around the same time and we both started with the same idea that Angels Camp is, pretty much is waiting to expand and become something great. I have a feeling about it, there's more people coming to it, there's so much history behind it. We have one of the greatest authors to American history that decided to put a cabin around here and write a book about us. So I think it's only a matter of time before Angels Camp decides to make an expansion again. And I hope that I'm able to be part of that forefront to help Angels Camp stop living in Murphy's shadow and help make a, and help make a stand again, help us stand out, bring the tourists. And I've noticed that a lot of, a lot of the hotels actually also point me in their, in the direction when their tourist comes in. So we get a good crowd of locals and tourists. And we've gotten good feedback on all social media, so we're getting a lot of tourists in that, in that aspect too. And we're slowly also, we're also slowly trying to increase the nightlife. On Tuesdays now, we have salsa Tuesdays and I offer free salsa lessons. We stay open till 10:00. And so if you're, if you're looking for something fun to do tonight, stop by, there's free salsa lessons. We started adding a few mixed drinks there, but it's with agave wine and stuff like that, but it tastes just the same. You can just drink a little more because it's a little less alcohol, so. So that's pretty much it. That's pretty much it.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Love the energy, Pablo.
I just want to say personally, I really appreciate your mild salsa. Thank you.
Yeah, the spicy one's going to live out of hand sometimes, but you got to.
It's the only way I can eat Mexican food because of your mild salsa.
All right, thanks, guys. Really appreciate your energy. A few more people like you may, may get out from under Murphy's shadow. That's a great, great line. I like it. I like it. Thank you. Okay. Now we're going to go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. And the following consent agenda items are expected to be routine. They'll be acted on by the council at one time without discussion. All right, here we have the approval of the minutes for the meeting of May 2nd. And does anybody want to remove that for discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move. Second?
I have a motion by Councilperson Herman, a second by Vice Mayor Faldor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll need to abstain, so pass off 301 votes. Okay, we're onto the regular agenda. The first item is Destination Angels Camp, Five-Year Strategic Plan Presentation. Mr. Larry Cornish.
Great, I get to follow Pablo and Michael. I didn't bring any gifts, I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you, Mayor Bee Hill and City Council for the opportunity to share the Destination Angels Camp Development Corporation's five-year strategic plan for fiscal years 2018 and 2023. And I think you have handouts? Did you? Okay. Don't read it now. Don't read it now. Our first five-year fiscal or strategic plan was drafted back in 2012 when our organization was incorporated and right after the city council unanimously approved a resolution to recognize and support DAC as an economic development corporation for the betterment and benefit of Angels Camp. Our board started on the new strategic plan back in January and what you see in front of you today is the culmination of many, many hours of work, education, investigation, brainstorming, negotiation amongst ourselves on what we want it to be and what, what we want to look like, and a lot of hard work. Last Thursday, a board approved what you have in front of you. We started by developing a vision statement, what we want to look like in five years. And we have decided upon the theme of we will become the go-to place for anything business in Angels Camp. Anything business, we want to be the place where people are sent and we can help them. This means we will actively support new, future and current businesses with assistance in whatever they need. This could be assistance with locating funding for remodeling project, working with commercial property owners looking for tenants, recruiting new businesses to the area, developing marketing plans for businesses, locating a suitable rental location through property database, through our property database, help with a business plan, or even help with an exit strategy for a couple who may want to retire and just move on and get away from their business. Next, we reviewed our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, commonly called a SWOT analysis. Our copy of the SWOT analysis in your package in the appendices so that you can take a look at it later on. Then we started developing our goals to support our vision of being the go-to place for anything business. We will be working more closely with existing organizations like the Visitors Bureau and Chamber of Commerce and developing deeper relationships with county and state entities. I want to make sure you understand that we will only partner with organizations that provide a benefit back to the city of Angels and the community of Angels Camp. Any partnership must result in an increase in grant funding or funding to support your projects, increase your sales tax or property tax revenues, or transit occupancy tax revenues, or increase your permit and building fees. We believe this is what economic development really means to each of you. We will be developing more programs and services for our business community. We will reduce our focus on marketing collateral and let the experts on tourism continue in this area with our support and guidance. We also believe that if we focus on business development, the tourism piece will take care of itself. Finally, we need to work on ourselves. We need to position ourselves to be successful. This means we need to keep our professional appearance and be available to support our clients in the city of Angels. We need to be recognized for being the go-to place for anything business in Angels Camp. So as you look through your packet, please read our executive summary. The appendices contain backup information and to talk more about our goals and objectives, here's Debbie.
I do come bearing some gifts.
Oh, not again.
This is a bribery. But in our focus as we go forward-
I've got a set of clubs in my car.
With Destination Angels Camp, we're looking at ways to reduce paper. And so tonight's presentation is on your drive here. That's pretty clever. And I have one for Mary.
Thank you.
I'm going to have one for the attorney.
Oh, wow.
That's a point to do.
Thank you.
One for Susan.
There you go.
So what I'm going to do tonight is talk a little bit about the goals and objectives and that's all we want to focus on tonight. We, as a committee, have worked since January putting this together. We've had some meetings to discuss among our board members and other members of the community if we're going in the right direction or not. And we feel confident at this point that we are. We've established some goals and objectives. This is tonight, what we want to share with you. Our next plan is to be able to work with you in workshops during the month of June as we take a look at our action plan for the next year, year and a half. We want to do action plans for five years, but we're going to take baby steps, year and a, year and a half at a time, and look at the funding part of that. So I'm not here to ask tonight for money, but I will be back. And certainly right now, I want to start with the presentation and trying to keep it somewhat brief because I did present earlier tonight the presentation in paper format, but you also have it for your computers.
So the lights there? So this is our strategic plan 2017, 2022. We work on a fiscal year, so this is actually starting in July 2001. How did we get here? Started in March of 2012 with the city council resolution, just reaffirming and establishing Destination Angels Camp as a private partner, private public partnership with the city of Angels and the city council. In January 2017, we started with our committee. We've been meeting on a pretty regular basis, coming together with what's worked in the past, what we've accomplished, what did we not accomplish, and how we want to move forward. Our vision and our mission, as Larry stated, you know, I was asked by one of our newest members to the board of directors, what do you want to be when we grow up? Or Debbie, when you come to work every day, what would be your ultimate goal? And we talked a lot about different things and really it's, it's the go-to place for Angels Camp. So as I talked to many businesses on my first 88 days in office, I found to where a lot of people just quite, were not sure really what DAC did or ACBA did, or I think you do this, or can you do more of that? I really need help with alternate funding sources. I really don't know much about marketing. You know, I'm always looking for help, I can't find good help. How, how do you know about all these labor laws? You know, I didn't know minimum wage had gone up. All sorts of things that I was finding from businesses. And that's businesses that are here. And as we take a look at what businesses are wanting when they come into town, very similar situations. So as we saw our vision, pretty, pretty simple, you know, kind of sounded corny at first when some of us heard it, but if you really think about it, we want to be the go-to place for anything business in Angels Camp. There's nothing like it in the area. You have to go here for this and there for that and so on and so forth. And most people just don't have that kind of time. And most people just don't have that kind of time to go and do that research or that fact-finding. In our mission, we wanted to take a look, you know, our mission is to create a vibrant business environment showcasing Angels Camp's strengths and uniqueness. And we all know we have many unique situations here in Angels Camp. We want to cultivate social and educational opportunities. We want to improve upon the tourism infrastructure year-round for residents, businesses, visitors, through economic and destination development. So this took a lot of talk between us, trying to figure out, because that was probably two, three pages long. We said, no, we're gonna cut it to a paragraph. So we have lots to do. We had many goals. How do you select the top three, five, seven, 10? We decided to tackle five. We went with government relations. You notice the hashtag. We're moving forward in the future. So government relations. We want to strengthen our partnership with the City of Angels and the city council and develop deeper relationships with county and state government entities. We have found that this is somewhat of a weak point for Destination Angels Camp, the business environment in general, and we hope that we can improve upon that. Services and programs, we have many. It's packaging them, what works now, what maybe didn't work well way back when. Is it something we want to bring forward? What's new and exciting out there that we can offer our members in our businesses here in Angels Camp? So we want to continue, and we want to develop, and we want to implement core programs and services for business retention and attraction. We want to look at funding. Years past, funding has been based on the city's contributions and some of our advisory council contributions. We want to diversify. We want to take a look at building up our advisory council where we have more members. We want to try to take a look at grant funding. We want to look at partnerships with other associations and see how we can be stronger together and unite our funding. Because as I know you know, on the city council, funding is very limited. How can we get the most bang for our very limited dollars? Operations, we want to ensure the long-term viability and the quality of our organization and its services. We've been in existence now for more than five years. We'd like to do another five and another five and another five. Positioning, again, increasing our awareness and understanding of Destination Angels Camp and its programs and services. So strategic goal number one, government relations. You know, key objectives, again, I mentioned our resolution. That's kind of a driving force for us. We want to ensure a better understanding of DAC's work. We want to be able to support the city's agenda. We know the city has many things on its plate. How can DAC be a better partner and bring in those kinds of things to fruition? You know, talking with Dave, we have things like wayfinding. We have the Main Street Plan. We have the Trail Plan. We have many, many plans in place. We now are in that position to move forward, and DAC wants to partner with that. We want to enhance services and access to our stakeholders, gain access to additional funding opportunities, and stay top of mind so that new businesses' opportunities are referred to Angels Camp. And we want to work with the city to find ways to improve our sources of funding for all of us, whether that be looking at our tax, our sales tax, our property taxes, or TOT tax, whether that's looking at fees, reduction of fees, increase of fees, whatever that might be. We want to have some open dialogue as we pursue those opportunities. Goal number two is services or programs. And as the ad says, yes, people do want to live, work, and play in Angels Camp. And that's kind of a core message that I've heard from many of the businesses that are coming into Angels Camp. And you have two examples here tonight that I think shared that vision. We want to exceed the needs of our business stakeholders, go above and beyond. We don't want to be the ordinary. We want to be the extraordinary. Attract more businesses to Angels Camp. We have a laundry list of kinds of businesses that want to come to Angels Camp. I was very pleased this week that the police chief gave me a referral of a business in Sonora that wants to come to Angels Camp. Those are kinds of networking opportunities I'm talking about. We want to strengthen existing businesses and reduce business failures. So many times, we have a business that all of a sudden are here today, and tomorrow, there's a moving seller for a clothes sign, or they just close their doors and there's nothing there. We want to be able to help bridge that. Maybe we can help them sell their business. Maybe we have owners wanting to take a look at an existing business. Again, we can be that go-to person when someone's thinking about exiting or developing an exit strategy for their business. They can come to us to see how we can assist them. Again, becoming the go-to place for anything business. We want to partner with other businesses, organizations, to maintain, expand, and promote the programs and services. One of the things we're taking a look at is that we have many small organizations within our city, within our county, how maybe we can combine our forces, maybe we can consolidate, fall under one umbrella, whatever that might be. Those are kinds of things that we want to address in our action plan. Seriously, take a look to see what we can do in this next year and a half to take a look at how we can possibly, on this particular objective, come together as one united front in supporting the businesses in Angels Camp. We want to enhance our tourism infrastructure and tourism-related businesses. Strategy three, the funding. That's always a fun one. Expand number and tenure advisory council members. You know, we currently have about 25 members. We've just recruited three new members. We want to expand that. Our action plan will take a look at how we're going to do that and what benefit these advisory council members will have as they invest in Destination Angels Camp. We'd like to increase that number to 50. We see the opportunities for people to come on board, to help be our think tank, to be another resources for our businesses. We have successful businesses here in our area. And if we have somebody who's maybe struggling and need a little help in finance or marketing support, maybe there's another successful business that can be part of that advisory council and help us as that think tank, as I call it. We want to expand the City of Angels role as a financial partner. We want to explore grant opportunities and additioning funding through community partnerships. Explore consolidation of other business support organizations to achieve greater efficiencies, reach, and visibility. Operations, think it's important to maintain a professional image regards to office space, staffing, the materials we produce, the presentations we make. We want to be able to address that and maintain that. Have professional staffing, again, to carry out the sufficient resources we need if we're gonna be that go-to-for-anything-business resource center. Expand the executive director's position to ensure ability to deliver goods on services. Currently, I'm part-time. Part of our action plan will be to take a look at how this position can go into a three-quarter time or full-time position and what other kinds of services we may need to carry out that goal. Be efficient and economical in our operations to allow maximum time for personal interface with stakeholders especially. I can't say this enough. I've been pleasantly surprised, being in the office. I've maintained hours consistently, Monday through Friday, nine to three, give or take a few hours. But I am surprised at the number of people who come and seek out the destination office, whether they're looking at expanding their business, whether they're looking at creating a business, they're just needing help. People are coming to Destination looking for that. We want to be able to take that time and spend with them. And that's probably at least half of my time right now is spending many, many hours talking with people, touring with people, showing them a different look of Angels Camp. It's not your typical, oh, yeah, I've been downtown. I know that, I know those stores are there. I've seen that or whatever. Just last week, I spent time with the gentleman who just recently bought the cornerstone building. He had been in Angels Camp, moved to Vallesito. He's moving back to Angels Camp. He had not walked the streets of Angels Camp for over 10 years. So he was pleasantly surprised at who is downtown, what is downtown, some of the debilitated state of our buildings. But again, it gave him that opportunity to really look at downtown from a whole new perspective. And that's what I'm finding is a key to success in getting people excited about Angels Camp. And I think Pablo and Michael spoke of that as to why they decided to go into the downtown portion of Angels overall as it fit into their business plan. Where do we go from here? Well, some might want to go fishing. Some might want to go to the fair. But we have more to do. So we might do some of that, but really, in June, we now are taking what we have here with your support of our goals and objectives and taking a look now and really narrowing down to an action plan. We want to now get very specific as how we're going to address these objectives to reach these goals. And that's what we're going to be doing over the next two weeks. With these action steps, we are also putting together the budget. You know, do we need five grand to do this, or do we need a grand to do this? Or do we need 10 grand to do this? So we want to narrow down on the finances and where we might be able to achieve some of that financial successes. From there, working with Mary, we hope to participate in one of the city council workshops. I know that Mary is trying to work on something with the council so we can have a sit-down and have open dialogue in a workshop setting to talk about, to make sure we're on the right track, to see that your ideas are being fed into the action plan. And then we can together look at the finances and see what can be achieved or not achieved, or where do we go from there. So we're hopeful for that, and we're looking forward to having that open dialogue in the month of June. With our ultimate goal of putting our plan in place by July 1st, 2017. So about 30 days, as I see it, because I discount Frog Jump, and I discount Memorial, and I discount graduation. And we'll get a 30 good days out of there to be able to put all of this together and present back to you our goals and objectives with an action plan and the finance, how we're going to finance this thing. But most importantly, which I don't think really happens enough, is how are we going to measure our success? How are we going to measure what's working and what's not working? And so part of our action plan overall is to be able to come back to the city council on a quarterly basis and give you that kind of updated information. I think that's been lacking in the past, maybe not as frequent as it should be. And as a partner in this endeavor, I think it's important that we come back to you to share with you what's working, what's not, and how we can retool or redo whatever it is that we need to do to make sure that this action plan is moving forward and not backwards. So thank you. Are there any questions?
No, thank you, Debbie.
Okay.
I appreciate the emphasis on helping the local current businesses do better. It's not always just about attracting new folks. It's about helping the folks that we already have succeed.
Very much. I saw a lot of that in my 88 days of people who, you know, and sometimes it's something real simple, but it's being able to put several heads together and ideas together to see how we can work weller, how we can work better together.
Or weller.
Or weller. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
Okay, the second item on our agenda is a student resource officer donation from Calaveras Cannabis Alliance, Todd Fortall, police chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. You have before you a brief summary report that was put together by staff detailing what some of our concerns were. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions, Chief Fortall?
Yes, I have a question. My main question is, is there a way to maybe establish a relationship at the county with who's working over at Calaveras High or Santa? I don't know where he's at right now, but maybe merge, since it seems like we all need this, maybe merge that into one group where they operate both schools or school districts?
Yeah, I know the sheriff has expressed his desire to bring back the School Resource Deputy program to the county. And he's working toward that goal, I know. He does have a deputy currently that's assigned basically to respond to any calls for service that occur in any of the schools that are in the county's jurisdiction. He's not a dedicated School Resource Deputy in the pure sense of the position. It's a resource personnel funding issue, just like it is for us. So, you know, I can't, I can't commit their resources to our jurisdiction. They're basically doing the same thing that we are at this point, which is, you know, they've developed those relationships. The deputy that they have doing this is attending school function, going to school meetings, doing the same things that we're doing now. And we are, you know, working toward that goal as well. As you know, we've applied for the grant through the Bureau of State and Community Corrections. And we're awaiting eagerly the response from them on that. So if we do hear back from them, it should be in the near future. And hopefully, we'll be able to get somebody into that position on a permanent basis. But to answer your question, I just, you know, we do collaborate with them. We do work together. A lot of the issues, for example, I went to a call at the school last week that originated at the school. And then once I got there to investigate a little bit, found out that the crime that was being discussed or that needed to be investigated actually occurred outside of school hours. And the student lived in the county down in Copperopolis. They attended Bret Hart High School. The school called us. We made the notification to the sheriff's office, and they took over the investigation from there. So there, you know, the collaboration that we have is ongoing, and it will continue. I just can't commit their resources to our schools.
The reason why I asked is going forward, both the county and us are having to consider different ways to do staff and services. So I wasn't sure if there's a way to collaborate with the county to get those types of resources into one, you know, under one umbrella rather than us, you know, spending money in two different places. If there's a way to consolidate those resources and make it more effective, whether you guys go a certain amount of hours and the county goes a certain amount of hours, but kind of coordinate to bring it together so there's not duplicates everywhere. Because my concern is with you guys, with everything happening, with our budget, we don't know what's going on. Can we commit to that type of resource when we're considering other options at the city? And to promise the school something that we may not be able to provide, but maybe collaborate with another entity might be another way to think about, open creative walls of how that can happen.
And I think, you know, we share those same concerns. I know there's been some interest expressed at the county level in the grant that we applied for. It's a Prop 47 grant through the Bureau of State and Community Corrections. This is kind of, I mean, nobody else in the county applied for that funding. So if we're successful, which I hope we are, who knows if we will be or not? But if we are, and we are able to secure that funding moving forward, one of the options that I know has been discussed, I haven't been approached directly on it, but I've kind of heard through the rumor mill and being contacted through some of the people that work at the, both at the high school and our high school, Bret Hart, and then also at the County Office of Education. They've expressed some interest in collaborating on expanding that grant to include county schools as well. So I don't know if that helps answer your question. But moving forward, you know, we are looking at expanding and maybe doing a joint application, so to speak, to increase the funding that might be available through a grant to not only take care of our schools, but to take care of schools out in the county as well.
And how much is the grant, the funding from the grant? How much is that supposed to be?
The one we, the current grant that we applied for, it's, it's, it was 800 and some odd thousand dollars. I don't have the exact figure in front of me. But that figure includes a full-time School Resource Deputy or Juvenile Diversion Officer is the actual definition as it's defined in the grant application for three years. And it also covers the costs associated with a full-time counselor that would also be assigned at the high school. They would have an office, Bret Hart's agreed to provide office space at their high school if the grant is, the funding's approved.
And this donation is your concern? And one of the concerns I saw here is about federal laws. And so could you elaborate on some of your concerns about the cannabis?
Before that, for the benefit of everybody here, what we're talking about is that the Calaveras Cannabis Alliance has contacted Bret Hart High School and offered a donation in the amount of $60,000 to fund a student resource officer. And because that officer would be an employee or member of the City of Angels Police Department, the school felt it would make more sense for the donation to be paid directly to the city instead of passing it through the school. And there are several reasons why the staff feels that we should decline this donation from the Cannabis Alliance. And that's where...
That's my question.
So to answer your question, excuse me, as recently as August of last year, August 2016, the Drug Enforcement Administration got together and considered whether or not to remove marijuana from the list of Schedule I Controlled Substances. In that debate, well, actually, they got together before August. And in August is when they published a 79-page report that detailed all of their reasons and justifications for not removing it from the list of Schedule I Controlled Substances. So therefore, under federal law, marijuana is still considered to be an illegal drug. It's considered a controlled substance under federal law, and it's illegal under federal law. Obviously, there's been... Obviously, there's been a lot of states, including California, that have decided they're going to legalize it for not only medicinal reasons, but for recreational reasons. The current administration at the federal level has indicated and hinted that they may be looking at states that have legalized marijuana for recreational purposes. They haven't given any indication so far. They're going to go after the states that have legalized it for medicinal reasons, but they have hinted around and indicated that they are going to take a look at the states that have legalized it for recreational purposes, California being one of them, and they may pursue enforcing federal law against those states. So that's the primary reasons that are listed. All the reasons are listed in the staff report that was provided to you are basically as a result of those, that issue, all centered around that issue. California has, you know, taken a firm stance in their position, but it remains to be seen. I know there's an assembly bill that's working its way through right now that will basically, if it makes its way through and it gets approved, would create sanctuary status for California under the marijuana laws, not immigration, but marijuana. So that's a new thing that's recently come about. I just got an email on that about a week or so ago. So it's just this ongoing debate and ongoing issues, and as of right now, with current federal law being what it is, not to mention the budget issues that are also mentioned in the report that you have, we just feel that probably not a good idea for us to be putting ourselves in a position where we are accepting a donation that would put us in direct violation of federal law.
What about your feelings about Proposition 64? Has there been an increase in problems as a result of that, or has it been since the county allowed cultivation? What have you seen in uptick in crimes and so on?
I think it's too early for us in terms of Prop 64 to really have any type of, you know, handle on, you know, how it might affect us or what's going on in our community. You know, the message that's being sent, whether directly or indirectly, is that marijuana's no big deal. So obviously, that is a concern for us as law enforcement, especially when you're talking about school-aged kids that are being involved, you know, or potentially being exposed to this, and the funding coming from a source that is basically a big proponent of marijuana. So it kind of, in a way, it seems contradictory from my viewpoint personally, but that's, you know, that's my personal opinion.
I don't know if you can answer it, but, or Dick, but going based off of what you just said, I mean, we've had programs sponsored by Farmy Cootables, you know, Budweiser, of course. Since this is a nonprofit, they still have to report to the IRS for their 501(c). So are we, I'm just, you know, understanding that that part of it, are we really taking whatever you want to call it, drug money or whatever, but when they have to report to the IRS on their nonprofit status, did that really will matter? And it may not just be this issue, but just coming in the future, like where are we going to get tangled up when they start coming down the pipe even more?
I think right now, based on the uncertainty, I would support the chief's decision or recommendation to take a very much belt and suspenders approach. I think though, Councilmember Follendorf, you point out some legitimate questions that I don't know that the answers actually exist to those yet. The chain of inferences would be that money was made through the sale of marijuana. That money, while lawful in California, is still technically on the books unlawful in federal law. That money would then funnel into the organization somehow, and then that money would flow from the organization to the city, and essentially, there would be some taint to those funds that could get the city in trouble. It's a theoretical liability, but technically on the books, there may be some problems. I think we're pretty small fish to the federal enforcement agencies. The chief mentioned the Trump administration has made statements suggesting, especially the Attorney General, that the Trump administration may not recognize or may not be fully on board with states that have legalized marijuana for recreational use. And so it's not clear what they might do, but what's even more less clear, more or less clear, I'm not sure that's grammatically accurate, but what's even less clear is what steps the federal government would take with respect to local governments. In California, local governments are subdivisions of the state technically, we're not a charter city. And so I, you know, I'd say that the actual risks we face are theoretical, they exist on paper, they need to be discussed, but that the chances of us actually having federal agents show up at our door and, you know, knocking down the door and hauling Mary off or, you know, are pretty small. So I would, you know, but we have to mention them because we don't know.
Well, why I ask that is because states do have the right to have, develop their own commerce where the federal government did not interfere with that as long as it didn't cross state lines. So, I mean, it's, right now, we're just at the tip of the iceberg of what we're going to be seeing going forward. So with Prop 64 money coming down, I mean, not the same, it's the same theory of this. And so I just want to just find out more how that's going to affect us going forward, and...
The governor of the state of California is facing the same dilemma that we are right now, because what he's doing technically by federal law right now is illegal. So, I mean, it's just, I don't know how else to put it.
Well, I would at least encourage you, if we can going forward, work with, in collaboration with the county, if we can expand that grant to more than just the city, because it's going to, it's, these kids are coming in the city limit, but they're coming out from the county, like you mentioned, Copper and up the hill on the four corridors. So if there's a way that we can expand where it's just not within the city limit, but we can join those to work with the county, I would really like to see that.
I think the vast majority of the high school students are county residents and not city residents, so there's some, makes some sense. Does anybody have any questions, or Chief Fortall? No? Okay. And I will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the dais for discussion and emotion. Does anybody have it? Ronnie, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, based on that they're already in the process of a current grant application, I would motion to support staff decision to deny, or to go ahead with the recommendation and not accept it, and see where this grant money comes from that they have currently...
So is that, that's a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
I'll second that.
So maybe that's more complicated than it should be.
So we have a motion from Vice Mayor Follendorf, a second from Councilperson Herman. Any discussion opportunities? Yes.
Well, not, you know, again, I think the problem is, I know I hear from Jeff Sessions, our general, and he is, hates laws that are unenforced on the books, you know, he's against the lawlessness. So I do think too, that it's something that we have to see, it's kind of premature to enter into these kind of relationships, because we don't know the consequences long-term, and we have to really see how 64 affects our community and the negatives and the positives that come out of that. You know, we don't know how the teenagers will be affected, you know, because it really does infect their brains, and we know that it'll stop some development, and it's very dangerous. So it's going to be difficult as it is. I hate to make it harder by supporting it, especially at this time.
Yeah, as much as it's lovely, $60,000 would be fabulous. However, I do have to agree that at this time, you know, hopefully, the grant will come through, that would be fabulous. We can't go forward with this. I mean, I feel that we can't go forward with it. As you stated, Amanda, you know, we're on the tip of the iceberg. We'll see where it all goes, but I don't think we need to jump into anything without testing the waters. So let's just push that aside and go the way we know there's no trouble.
And I would say for city staff, maybe to encourage CCA to find another maybe nonprofit to work with that could utilize that at a greater scale for the county, whether that's the mentoring program, or the Calaveras Foundation, or something that they, I know they do similar things, and maybe they have a greater benefit than what the city can do right now.
And a bigger outreach.
Yeah, and for me, I agree with what's been said. However, I also know that our high schools need education in this matter. Our kids, I put three kids through Bret Hart, and no one ever called me and said, oh, this was a threat, this is a problem on campus, this is what you should be aware of as a parent. So there's a lot of education opportunities for the kids and for the parents. And so while we're not in a position to accept this, I would like to encourage the Calaveras Cannabis Alliance to offer some educational, put out some pamphlets, put out some information that educates our kids and our parents about the negative aspects of marijuana at the high school level. I'm sure the good actors don't want it prevalent in the high schools any more than we do. So perhaps that's money better spent. So we have, the motion has been made and seconded, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes on a 4-0 vote. Okay, and I'll move on to calendar. Susan?
Okay. Tomorrow night, or tomorrow at 10:30 a.m., COG has a technical advisory committee meeting. The museum commission meets on the 18th, and the Frog Jump starts on the 18th and goes through Sunday. The 23rd is UWPA meeting at 5:30, and on the 25th, there's a 10:30 a.m. DAC Executive Committee meeting. We'll meet back here on June the 6th, 6 p.m. per council.
Thank you. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.